Good morning. Welcome to the February 4th, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting. At this time, we'd like to ask any member of the audience that has a cellphone to please turn it to silent or turn the ringer off. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. I think we just have one item on the agenda for the zoning board of adjustment. Approval of the January 7th, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Linda made the motion to approve. Jan seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion items or staff items? Okay. Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment meeting.
Don't move.
Karen made the motion and Linda seconded. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned of zoning board of adjustment. So we'll now commence the planning commission meeting for February 4th, 2016. It's 2016. Any member of the audience that wishes to speak on an item on the agenda? There are speaker request forms along the table, along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. Consent calendar. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following item, item 316 PD 034. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through six staff wants to remove? Any items that the planning commission wants to remove? And any items the audience would like to remove? Seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through six in accordance... Linda made the motion. Second. Karen seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
That calendar is passed. Item number seven.
Item number seven is 15 PD 029. Final plan development to allow an oversized garage and LDR up on skyline. This was continued from the November 25th, 2015 planning commission meeting at the applicant's request. The applicant, again, is out of town and is requesting that the item be continued to the February 25th meeting.
Jan made the motion to continue. Linda seconded. All those in favor of the continuation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the item is continued. Item number eight.
Item number eight is 15 PD 046. A final plan development overlay to convert the Garfield School Building into apartments. It's existing building. Let me take you through some slides located in north side, on north of Van Buren, south of Custer, along Dilger Avenue. Property is zoned medium-density residential district and it has an initial plan development on the property. The initial plan development granted some exceptions such as the rear yard setback and the 24-foot parking aisle width. Looking at the existing structure on the building and parking. Future land use is public, quasi-public, but we have urban neighborhood and low-density neighborhood around this property and it's all being developed with residential. And just west of Haynes, which is an arterial street. The applicant is requesting an exception, a new exception, which is there's these five parking spaces which back into an alley. So one of the exception requests is to allow parking to back into an alley. Since it isn't single-family, it's more commercial-ish parking, being that it's for an apartment building. Only single-family parking is allowed to back into an alley. One of the things they're doing, though, is they're maintaining a 20-foot parking stall length, which would ensure that most vehicles will not encroach into the alley and block it for any emergency vehicles or a garbage truck or other residents that use that alley. In addition, though, the applicant is requesting an exception to reduce the stall width from 10 feet, which is what is required by ordinance, to nine feet, which is what our standard parking stall width is. Staff believes that with the 20-foot length and the other residential uses in the alley that the exception should be granted. In particular, the applicant's looking at creating 12 apartment units within the building. Here we have some elevations. I believe they're starting work on some of the interior remodeling already. Landscaping being proposed. Access to the property will be from the alley. Here we have a picture showing the existing structure, looking north on Dilger Avenue, across the street, existing single-family residences, and to the south. This is looking from the alley to the south, so this is the access point, and looking at the south side of the building. And this is adjacent property on this block, which is our next application that we'll be looking at for single-family dwellings. With that, staff recommends that the final plan development overlay be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant at this time?
Any questions from the commission for staff on this? Any comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the item. Karen made the motion to approve per stipulations. Jan seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, I'm gonna have to hand the gavel over unfortunately to Karen, so, sorry.
All right. Okay, let's open the item number nine. And Fletcher, you wanna give us a background?
Item number nine is 15 PD 048. Major amendment to a plan development to allow a townhome development in lieu of a triplex development. That was the original title. Since we've been working with the applicant, it's been revised to allow eight single-family manufactured homes on properties instead of townhomes. We just couldn't change the title because that's what originally got advertised. So it's the adjacent properties around the Garfield School. Previously, there is a final plan development for these properties and it was to construct three-unit townhomes on the four lots that you see. The applicant came forward with an application to, well, it's vacant property, used to be the playground for the school, and... So this is the proposed layout. The applicant is requesting exceptions to the setbacks along Custer Street, down to 10 feet, and from Van Buren down to 13. This will maintain an eight-foot setback from the interior property lines, allowing 16-foot separation between the structures. The importance of that is that having them closer would cramp the neighborhood and fire department had issues with smaller setbacks on that. Reason we can support the setbacks from Custer and Van Buren is that access is being taken from the alleys. There's not gonna be any street access from Van Buren or Custer, and it's not impeding any site triangles in that area. The other exception request is a five-foot setback on this unit here from the south property line, and that can be supported because the Garfield School is an existing structure and there's about 30 feet separation between those, and the fire department wasn't as concerned with that setback. Take you through, this is basic of what the units will look like that was submitted by the applicant. Here's a rendering that was submitted with the major amendment when it was going to be townhomes. So you can, and so basically what, it'll look like this, only they'll be separated units. Staff's concern with that was getting these, this development to fit in with the neighborhood, and we're in a single-family, predominantly single-family neighborhood out here, and our concern was the design of the firewall between the units. So being able to separate them into single-family, it'll really fit in better with the neighborhood. And one of the things we really like about the proposed development is the addition of these porches on the fronts of the structures, give them a little bit more character to fit in, and so that, you'll see that as one of our stipulations of approval, is that those features be constructed. Another rendering. Now that they're single-family, the 20-foot setback is what's required from these classification of streets. It was, when they were townhomes, 25 feet, and we'd reduced the setback to 20.5. Sign posted on the property, looking to the east from, can't remember the street name, and looking to the north and to the south, and you can see the other single-family development in the neighborhood. Staff's recommending that the major amendment be approved with the stipulations in the staff report, and the applicant is here for any questions. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Fletcher. Is there any comments or questions from the planning commission members? Anything from the audience that we'd like to speak to this item? Okay, I have one quick question, Fletcher. You mentioned that because it went from a townhouse to a single-family, then the setback on the street side is only 20 feet, not 25? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I was a little confused when I looked at the project.
Well, it's different sections of the ordinance. There's a townhome ordinance, which never got changed, to reduce the setback to 20 feet on sub-collector streets. So we have to go by that for townhomes or a single-family, and medium-density is covered at 20, so.
Okay. I just was confused when I looked at the project plan because it had that 25 feet in there, so, that's fine. Okay. Since we have no comments, has somebody like to make a motion?
Move to a person.
Okay. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and I'll turn the gavel back over to Eric.
Thank you. Before we get to item number 10, I did get a speaker request form, item number seven, from Mr. Haig. You already took action to continue that item. If we could, could we just do that at discussion items if you still have something to say at the end of the agenda?
Yes, I mentioned it a minute ago. I saw it on the agenda, so I just put one in just to make sure that it was being continued.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item number 10.
Item number 10 is a final plan development overlay to allow an apartment complex. This is on northwest side of the city, on North Plaza Drive. Property is zoned office-commercial district, which allows for apartments. In particular, the applicant, it's a vacant lot right now across from Fountain Springs Church and some residential to the east. There's more industrial uses to the west. The future land use designation of the property is industrial, but it abuts urban neighborhood to the east, so using some flexibility in the comprehensive plan to look at this as extension of the urban neighborhood. North Plaza Drive is identified as an arterial street, minor arterial, which we'll get a little more into that a little bit later, but the reason this is a planned development coming before you is that there are two primary structures on the property, so they have to get approval of a final plan development because there's only one primary structure allowed on a single piece of property. The applicant's proposing two structures with a total of 28 apartment units and then a detached, so we have the apartment units here, and then a detached garage located within the parking lot. Landscape plan, with North Plaza Drive being identified as a principal or a minor arterial street, 100 feet of right-of-way is required for that street. Currently, that's not dedicated. After talking with Public Works, they said that ideally we'd get 80 feet, which would require an additional seven feet of right-of-way in the future, should North Plaza Drive need to be dedicated for and built out to arterial standards. Our concern was that if the applicant built any structures or any drainage improvements within those seven feet, that that might cause them heartache in the future, having to revise it. So they've moved the drainage, which is along this end, out of that seven feet, so should there ever need to be an extension of, or build out of North Plaza Drive as an arterial, any issues are avoided. The applicant is requesting an exception to allow a height of 36 and 1/2 feet in lieu of the minimum required, or minimum allowed, maximum allowed, 35 feet of height. It's still a three-story structure, and, you know, with the separation provided by North Plaza Drive to the residential to the east and the setbacks over there, and that there's industrial around this and location of the property with some drainage along this east or west side is a drain, drainage ditch, the height will be mitigated, and so staff recommends that the exception be granted. So those were elevations of the proposed detached garage. Parking is being met, and one of the garage units on the end is actually ADA accessible, so they're meeting their ADA requirements. Look at the site, looking to the south and west. Church, that's on the east, northeast of North Plaza Drive. You see, North Plaza Drive isn't really built to city street design standards. Just looking to the south and east. One of our concerns is this is a access easement on the property, which, let me get back to one of the site plans. On this south side, the applicant is showing, taking access from that existing road, which is used to access a city water facility. If the applicant does want to use this access, they'll have to pave it to city design standards or get exceptions. Otherwise, they can remove that access, and there shouldn't be any issues with the flow around, the circulation around the parking. So that's just one of the issues, and you'll see in one of the stipulations. That's why we included it. Looking along North Plaza Drive to the north and west. Before you on the dais is an email that we received last night from the Coca-Cola Company voicing their concern with the development and bringing forward that they don't, their opposition to the proposed final plan development. The property is zoned office-commercial district. The reason we're looking at this is because there are two primary structures, multifamily is allowed in office-commercial. The streets, their concern is traffic, more residential traffic back there. There is a lot of residential. There's a large apartment complex to the east of this, and townhomes and Fountain Springs assisted living, I believe, along this stretch of road. So just wanted you to be aware that we do have one letter in opposition. With that, though, staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with stipulations in the staff report, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Fletcher. Excuse me. Kim noted that she's gonna have to abstain from this item, and I've got a light-up from Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask Fletcher a question, please?
Sure.
Fletcher, if I understood this correctly there, this is a City of Rapid City arterial road.
Yes.
And so there's a possibility that the city may have to expand this for the right-of-way on either side. So my question is, did the staff work with the property owner at this time to go ahead and get that right-of-way deeded over to the city so that there's no conflict in the future?
No, there's, there's no requirement that they dedicate the right-of-way. This isn't a plating application. Our concern was that if they put any structures or any improvements such as drainage within the property, which may be needed for right-of-way in the future, which the city would have to come and purchase, that, to avoid any issues in the future, that we get anything that would have a negative impact on the site, such as having drainage there, that that got removed out of that area so that they're protected in the future should North Plaza Drive ever need to be built out, and the city has less of an issue with having to do that, too, so.
And the drainage then is taken care of even when that road is expanded in the future?
Yep.
All right.
So that's one of the things, and the applicant was very graciously worked with us on that, and we fixed it, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions or comments on this item? Karen?
I have a question as far as the zoning for this property. I know the future land use talks about it being light industrial, but there was a reason why it was zoned to allow for this apartment in the past, and I can't remember why. Do you remember, Vicky?
I'm not sure if maybe the comprehensive plan was adopted after it was rezoned, so it may have met the future land use designation at the time, or even the way it is now, the comprehensive plan asks us to look at, have some flexibility in how those are applied. So the urban neighborhood is shown on the east side of North Plaza and northeast, because that's where the existing residential is. This abuts, there's no other development that's happening, and it kinda gives us an idea of what other development next to it should be in the future.
Oh, Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
Vicky?
If I might. Years ago, when you were constructing an industrial street, there was no requirement to provide sidewalk. And over time, we realized that was a mistake, that there are pedestrians that walk in those areas, too. We subsequently revised our design criteria manual, where sidewalks are required along commercial, industrial, residential streets. As a part of that, when we looked at our comprehensive plan, we have primary uses and secondary uses identified within all of those dynamics. A secondary use would cross over to your higher-density residential. When this rezone came forward to allow this to be office-commercial, I can't recall right now, Karen, if the old plan was in place, which there was a mix of both commercial and industrial within this area. Subsequently, it is in a light industrial designation. However, the zoning was already secured. Even having said that, a secondary use would allow for higher-density residential. So with the plan development that's in place now, obviously, we can look at how that pedestrian and vehicular access is designed to minimize the truck traffic that otherwise is in the area because of the existing industrial uses.
Okay. I just, in the back of my head, I remembered this being rezoned for a reason, and I just couldn't remember what that was, but it is kind of odd because it's, if it was office-commercial, it wouldn't be quite so intrusive, I guess, as a residential for the industrial people is what I'm looking at, but it's zoned to allow it, so that's kinda what throws you off a little bit, so.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Thanks.
And you're right, Karen. Having said that, the original comprehensive plan showed it as commercial. Office-commercial is a commercial designation. Our office-commercial today allows for residential development, and in the future, we're looking at that. Is that really appropriate? Because it's kinda one way of coming around and getting residential development in a commercial node. So it's something we'll be looking at in the future, too.
Thank you, Vicky. Further questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Linda?
Second.
Linda moves to approve. Jan seconded. Motion to approve per staff recommendations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now, item 11 is another one I have to abstain from, so I gotta put Karen on the spot again.
Okay, we'll open the floor for item number 11.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 11 is a preliminary subdivision plan to create eight commercial lots as a part of the Gateway Business Park subdivision. This property is located on the south side of East Mall Drive, east of what we know as Cabela's. This is on non-consent so that the chair could abstain. It's just a standard preliminary subdivision plan. Visiting with the consultant, he's indicated concurrence with all the stipulations as presented, so with that, we are recommending approval with the stipulations identified in the report.
Okay, thank you, Vicky. We do have one item from the audience. Mr. Kent Haig would like to speak, so I'll let him speak before we open it for other discussion.
Good morning, commission. I'm here mainly to answer or address any questions you have. My brothers and I are the ones that are proposing this and preparing it for further development. I will assure you that it's gonna be completed in a fashion that's worthy of being an entrance to Rapid City, so it's our total intent and always has been.
Okay, thank you, Kent. Any comments from the planning commission? Any other comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for this item. John made a motion to approve, and Linda seconded that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, item number 12.
Thank you. Item number 12 is 15 RZ 023, a request to rezone property from general agriculture district to heavy industrial district. Planning commission originally looked at this on, at the January 7th, 2016 planning commission meeting. At that time, the commission asked to seek additional information regarding the conceptual master plan for development of the property. Well, let me take you through this as a refresher, and I'll show you what the applicant has submitted. Property is zoned general agriculture district, mix of light industrial- Mix of light industrial, commercial, heavy industrial in the area. Area view of the property, today, the property remains undeveloped. Future land use of the property shows it is appropriate for light industrial development with some areas of urban neighborhood located on the south end of the property. And the major street plan shows principal arterial streets at Elk Vale and as well as Mul, as well as Mul Drive and East North Street. This is a copy of the conceptual master plan submitted by the applicant at the request of the Planning Commission. To give you an idea of what's going on here, the area shaded in yellow at the bottom of the screen would be the site for the proposed relocation of Ace Recycling and Steel. The yellow line on the left that curves down to the south is a proposed rail spur. The balance of the shaded area, no plans were submitted or uses were submitted for the anticipated or proposed use of that property. Look of the, I'll look at the property with the sign posted. The rail line as it exists today between Eglin Street and the subject property. And I look to the west at the same. Look over the railroad tracks towards the location of the proposed development. Staff took the time to review the applicant's proposed conceptual master plan as well as the letter, which has been attached as a part of the agenda summary for your consideration. The proposed conceptual master plan does not indicate or provide enough information for staff to be able to show that the potential impacts of heavy industrial development are being appropriately mitigated in this area. And the request remains in conflict with the, with the adopted comprehensive plan on several areas as such. Staff cannot support the request to rezon the property to heavy industrial district. There are two speaker request forms for the property and staff is available for questions at this time.
Thank you. I'll go to the speaker request forums, Peter Hendrickson.
Good morning, my name's Peter Hendrickson. I'm the property owner of the property immediately to the west and adjacent to the subject property. I was able to sit down with Mr. Hubner and he has addressed most of my concerns about his project. One of the things we did talk about was some screening on the common property line. And given that the site lines for this development and any future development on this property aren't established and the uses being requested, I would ask that the Planning Commission consider a stipulation for some screening on our, on our common property boundary as, as a stipulation to approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Hubner?
Good morning, thank you for hearing me. We had originally letters of opposition from Sylvia Conrad. She came in, I just wanna remind you last time, and changed her opposition. Pete Hendricks, the, but Hendrickson is now, does not have the opposition. I had sent you a letter signed by the majority of residents or business owners and operators surrounding the property. They were all in favor of it. What we are looking to do is move this scrap iron a quarter a mile, quarter of a mile away from the interstate into an area that can only be developed if the railroad grants you access for that site. I gave you a letter last time stating the railroad is familiar with this. They're behind it, they know that this is a location that will work for them. There is really no alternative location in Rapid City that works for what we wanna do. The only alternative is to stack things up to the sky and I do not wanna do that. I, born and raised, I'm looking to improve the gateway into Rapid City. I'm looking to improve our business. I'm looking to get some economies that will help us be more competitive business. And by the diagram where you showed, I'm gonna be shielded on the south. I'm gonna be shielded on the west. I'm going to be shielded on the east by all the tanks and by the north. There is only going to be a short distance in which you can see any of the scrap iron. It is a huge improvement over what I have right now for both the looks of Rapid City and for the, the other thing is the, it's gonna lower a lot of traffic to our place. That was one of the other concerns. So that's what I have, does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. I do have a light up from Amanda Scott. Do you have a question for Bill or any, any questions for, for Mr. Hubner while he's up here? Karen?
No, I do have a few questions. Number one, you're, you had mentioned you're gonna move the scrap iron from where it is to the new location that you identified and eventually move all your, your applications over there? Is that what I understand? Are you going to, are you, what I'm really asking is, are you going to vacate your spot that you are located in today and sell that or use that for something other than what you're doing?
You know, we, we haven't really put all of the cost figures together. We would, we would like to move everything over there eventually. We would probably not sell the property, would probably redevelop it into something else. But I can't give you, I can't sit here and say, I've got a lockdown 100% plan that says, I'm gonna get this all done in six months or a year. You know, we need, there's a lot of problems with the property we have right now. It was, it, when it was built, they really didn't realize that recycling was gonna be, grow to what it is today. I would love to move the whole facility over there. It has to been done in time. That, that is our ultimate plan, is to move it all over there and redevelop that property. But I can't say with 100% certainty, and I don't wanna sit up here and lie and say that that's gonna happen right now. It's gonna take a little bit of time.
Okay, I guess my, my concern, and it's not necessarily for you, but maybe your heirs or, you know, somebody that comes in behind you, is that the current property will continue to be a recycling process place, but that eventually it will have outdoor storage like it is today and, and there's, you know, there's nothing that says you can't continue to use that up, that property. And so if you're moving it to the other side, the question really comes down to, are you just expanding or are you intending to actually get out of that area where you are and, and actually make it something that will be nice to the traveling public?
I, I definitely am going to move all the scrap over there, okay? I could use some of the existing buildings for some of the light manufacturing we do. You know, we do shear and press break, plate rolling, those types of things all inside. You know, that, that type of stuff would probably still stay there until I get. To move over there, I'd probably have to, I really wouldn't mind consolidating quite a few of the companies we have under one shell. You know, 'cause we also have another company a quarter mile down the road. And that is our, that is our long-term plan. But I don't, like I said, I can't say with 100% certainty that I'm gonna start. I wanna start first by cleaning the area, moving all the scrap over there. And with that, once I do that, there would be no reason to have it because all the equipment would be across the road and it takes equipment to process this. You can't move that equipment back and forth. So when I clear that off on there, when I clear that scrapped off, it might be a good place to put up some, it would be a good place to put up some additional buildings. I no longer have to worry about vacating my, you know, long-term use of it and the, lose my grandfathering because I wouldn't be doing scrap there.
Okay. There's another question I had, but I, I'm gonna let some of the other folks talk and then if I think of what the other question is, I'll ask you again, if that's all right.
Thank you. I see John came up, do you, do you have something for Mr. Hubner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. I really would like to see this happen, but I just have a lot of questions about the rezoning. Last time we visited with you about possibly doing a plan development so that future people that come after you won't bring us something unexpected. And I know that's a long time down the road. None of us expect to be, or we all expect to be here forever, but we aren't. And a plan development would protect some of the city that's going on. As far as a complete plan to vacate the other property and whatever, I get that. That's not a problem for me. But I am concerned a little bit about the condition of Mother Earth underneath the existing scrap use and whether we're gonna end up with something there that's gonna limit the use of that property going forward. Certainly not under your ownership, but a concern. And if we don't have any environmental concerns on the property you're moving to, then will we in the future, given the nature of the business? And I don't know, so I'm just asking. Can you talk a little bit about?
I can, you know, and there used to be, years back before I got into it, everybody in the world, recycling facilities went in and they just processed whatever with no, no regard for the environment. Since I got in the business in 1989, those things have changed. We have, we've had the EPA come out and inspect this. The Department of Environment and Natural Resources makes periodic inspections. I've had Ellsworth Air Force Base has had to come out and inspect this because we do some products for this. We just got a, we just got a glowing review from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. You, Circla, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's the majority code that oversees the super fund, okay? The Comprehensive Environmental Regulatory Liability Act. It pretty much states that you're locked into this forever. So we have, anybody in our industry nowadays, that has to be their number one concern. You know, one of the reasons I would like to do this, I, I've had to, I've had to make sure that my flow of water is proper in this facility. And I have done things to keep everything on the premises in all of our areas in which we have drainage and stuff. DNR was amazed that we actually had, what do they call them? Cat, cattails growing in that, you know? They said that's a very good sign. But when we, if we get to build the new facility, then we want to put in the containment pond. We want to, it gives us the flexibility to go in and really change the, the way that everything is handled to make sure that, that the unforeseen is still protected for. It would be actually better environmentally for us to move to the new facility, to start fresh, to put in big containment ponds, to structure the, the water flow around there to make sure that water from other areas don't make it to it. And that's one of the things that I've had to deal with over the years. People would come in and they would build around me and they would change the water flow. You know, they say they don't, but I've been very fortunate. The last development, the Fox Den, they basically eliminated the, the water flow I had from their property flowing onto mine and it actually made things easier for me. But the environmental concerns are a lot less with a newer facility than they would be with our current facility. And we're, like I said, get glowing reviews on the current facility. It may look ugly, but underneath it's, it's decent.
Good, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Just one other question, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Oh, of course.
I see that you have a consultant in bringing this forward to Renner and Associates. And at the end of last time you were here to visit with us, some of the members on the panel asked if a plan development would be something you would consider on this property instead of just rezoning to, I'm sorry, general commercial? Heavy industrial. Have you thought anymore about that or visited with your consultant any further about that?
Yeah, we really don't think it's necessary because once we, once we get to the heavy industrial, then we have to go to conditional use and the conditional use is when they can take care of all those concerns. We get the heavy industrial and then we have to go to a conditional use after this to be able to put our facility on there.
Very good, thank you very much.
Jan, do you have a question?
I'd like to ask the staff, what, what more is it that you needed? You're advising to deny the plan because you don't have the, all the information you need. What more would you need from Mr. Hubner?
So we need to be clear that, as we spoke last time, there was a lot of work that went into Clarion and Associates coming to town, working with staff, property owners, business owners throughout our community, neighborhood meetings. And the future land use plan was adopted as a part of the city's comprehensive plan in that the land use designations are identified. Rezoning the property as proposed is in direct conflict with that plan. And it's to that end that staff does not support the rezoning application that's before you today, not necessarily his plan. I have no doubt that when Bill brings this project forward, it will be a great improvement from what, where he is on his current site. However, just looking at the land use in and of itself, this is not the appropriate uses that we want to have initiated and or expanded along Eglin Street. Remember, where he's at right now is grandfathered in, it's not zoned for it. And Bill indicated that he can't just move everything off that site and not know what his plan is in the future because if he stops using the existing site for the scrap iron recycling, he can't start it back up again in the future. It's not zoned for the use. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Can I make a comment to that? It wasn't zoned to that because when the city came out there, they didn't realize, they didn't look and see what was out there. They zoned it off, it's been scrap iron out there since 1973. So when the city came out and zoned it, they should've zoned it. They only had, excuse me, they only had one classification and that was industrial when they first did the comprehensive long-term plan back there. But it is, no matter what you say, it is an industrial area. If you look out there, there is a ton of heavy industrial out there. I'm looking to improve and clear it back and move it back.
Thank you. Amanda, you kept slipping down the line, I'll go to you, sorry about that.
That's okay, Mr. Chair. I was doing that to allow all the planning commissioners to speak first, but since you've called on me, may I ask a question of staff, please? Thank you. Vicky? My primary question, because it's been touched on up here, is that the Planning Commission, the last time this issue came before the Planning Commission, did talk about a plan development rather than rezoning this to heavy industrial because the rezoning, if it's granted, opens up anything in the future. And as, you know, John, John said that, you know, we all like to think that we'll be here forever, but we won't, so we have to kinda forecast into the future as far as what Rapid City is gonna be looking like 50 years, 100 years down the way. It, heavy industrial opens it up that if, if this property were to change hands going forward in the future, if it was rezoned heavy industrial, is there anything that anybody who wanted to do something else on that property would have to come back and ask permission? Or at that point, are they just in the planning stage of pulling a building permit?
Vicky?
Thank you. So if it's just zoned heavy industrial, and I think that Rob did a really good job listing all, several of the permitted uses that would just be allowed in heavy industrial, it would be just getting a building permit. You wouldn't see it and staff couldn't deny it so long as they met the land area regulations, parking setbacks, et cetera. So to, answer to your question is, without a plan development, the use of the property would be contingent upon anyone owning it in the future and doing something with it. Having said that, once you zone it heavy industrial, whether you put a plan development on it or if it's a conditional use, they come in with a conditional use permit, that doesn't stop anyone from purchasing this in the future and doing something with it that heavy industrial would allow other than what Bill's indicated today. So Vicky, as a follow-up question to that, and the Planning Commission had asked, if this was, actually had an application for a planned development, if it was, the application came through for a planned development, then the recycling center or the, the business owner could go ahead and put the heavy industrial use that they're looking for into a planned development. But then if that were to change any time in the future... But then if that were to change anytime in the future, it would have to come back before the planning commission. And then the planning commission could have a second look as far as what use was going to go there.
That is correct. If this were approved or continued until a final plan development was submitted with it, then a stipulation of approval, if the planning commission so determined appropriate, would be that the site could be developed as presented by the applicant, assuming everyone's in concurrence with the operational plan, and that any change in use or expansion of use would require a major amendment so that the neighborhood's put on notice and the planning commission would then act on it. And, Mr. Chair, if I could have some liberty here.
Sure.
Sometime back, Brett Limbaugh, our director, had some discussion with the planning commission about conditional rezoning. And it's a tool in the toolbox of many a planning department where if someone wants to come in and rezone a site and they're just speculative rezoning for the purposes of wanting to market it, a lot of communities don't allow this. If we had the ability to approve or rezone with conditions, that would preclude the need for Bill to have to do a plan development. It would secure it for the uses as he's proposing today. We don't have that today. We have to use the plan development. But I wanted to note it so that you remember it so that when we have a discussion in the future about maybe amending our ordinance to introduce conditional rezoning, you see the advantage of that. Whereas now, you know, it puts it on Bill to bring in a plan when he may not have that plan in place yet.
Thank you, Vicki.
Vicki, is it possible to, and I think it is, to rezone a piece of property by rezoning part of it, heavy industrial, part of it, something else?
Certainly, you could have more than one zoning designation on a piece of land.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought, but I think for the property that you're looking at to put your scrap metal and that kind of thing on there, that seems like an appropriate spot because you'd have the rail line there, you'd have, you're right next to those, that tank farm out there. And it's kind of away from the street. It's, it would be a benefit to have the scrap iron there. And I can see that. My concern is with the rest of the property, the other 33 acres, that we don't know what's going to happen. And for me, I would be comfortable rezoning that little stretch, that little corner that you're going to put the scrap iron on. I would be comfortable rezoning that to something heavy industrial. But the rest of it, I would rather leave until you know what you're going to do with it and leave it as ag for now and kind of look at the future. And you'd look at the future of what you want to do with that property. The other thing I want to comment on is, I would not have, I would not rezone this without a plan development. I know you mentioned you have to do a conditional use permit. Both of those items are similar. I mean, you have to do one, you have to do the other. And it would protect anything from the future of what's going on in that property. So my request to you is to actually rezone just that strip. And let us, you and us, take a look at the future of the rest of that 33 acres and leave it as ag use. So that's my request.
I do want to make, not that, but one comment about the heavy use. If it's heavy use, you come in, the one thing we have to keep in mind is the access, the only access that you're going to get to this property is over the railroad. And railroads are not, the city, the states have absolutely no say over the railroad. They are covered by the Surface Transportation Board out of Washington, DC. So anybody that wants to build on this facility has to get the approval to use that private access from the railroad, okay? That access right now is just for the use of the tank farm. They would allow me, but they will not grant use to anybody, no matter what it's zoned. They will not, you have to get their approval. And right now, if it wasn't for us and the tank farm, they would start blocking that access to it. So nothing is going to go in there without the approval of the railroad.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. I've got to add a couple of comments here. I think that this, having gone out to that property, I think it'd be a great move to get across the street. It would improve the neighborhood. However, I do share the concerns that a few have echoed up here of wanting that second look at this. There's, unfortunately, with rezoning, like everybody said, we have to consider the things that aren't in front of us right now. And so I guess I would be in favor of this with the plan development where we could address things like screening that Mr. Hendrickson said and some of the other things that are a part of developing a large parcel such as this. Karen, again?
I guess I would like to ask Bill if, you know, my comment about doing a section for heavy industrial, would you be willing to do that?
I have to take a look at the purchase agreement. Right now, I would say I do not have the capabilities of doing it.
I don't think it would hurt the purchase agreement with it. It's just a matter of you submitting the rezone for just a portion of that property once you, you know, instead of the whole thing.
You know, I don't know. The purchase agreement, I'd have to talk to my attorneys on it. The purchase agreement pretty much stayed at the zoning requirements for it, so I can't tell you right now. I think I know the law sometimes, but I find out I don't.
Okay. I have a question for staff. If we want to do this with a plan development, does this have to be continued or can you make, I mean, the rezoning, you don't have any stipulations on, so.
It depends upon whether or not you want to look at it before you approve the rezone or just approve the rezone, knowing that regardless of who develops it, they'll have to submit a plan development for you to look at. So I've heard planning commissioners say it both ways, that they wouldn't support the rezone unless they saw the detailed plan. Or are you comfortable rezoning it and then seeing Mr. Hubner's plan once he has that complete? He would then have to come back before you with an initial and/or final.
But once you rezon it, where's the tag that says he has to come back with the plan development?
Again, if you approve your rezone in conjunction with the plan development designation, then he cannot get a building permit or use the property for anything until he brings that use before the planning commission.
Okay. And since that's the case, I'm going to make a motion to continue this. I don't know how long it will take you to do some of those things.
I am under a time constraint. I need a yes or a no vote today.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, my concern is, and I think all of our concern is, the rest of that property. So my request, and my, I shouldn't say request, my motion is to continue this, to allow you to come back and rezone a portion of that property only after you've talked with your attorney and/or allow you to come back with a plan development for this property. And so that's my motion on the floor.
Karen made a motion. Linda seconded to continue, to allow some of the information to come back that she requested. Discussion on the motion.
Just for clarification, so that we get it all straight. So Karen, you've requested, you're asking that it be continued, and you will need to be date-specific in that. We'll talk about that in a second. To allow the applicant to revise the legal description of the request to only reflect the 6.3 acres as identified on his conceptual plan and to bring forward a plan development designation application or a final plan development application. We need to make sure he's aware of what it is that you're asking.
I was doing an and/or for that, but the six acres, that I want to have separated. So I guess, I guess, I don't care if he has a plan development designation on that six acres, as long as it's just that, as long as it's just that property that he's rezoning. But if he's not going to do that, if he doesn't want to rezone the property, then the whole property, I want a plan development designation on it so that we can go forward. Does that make sense? Am I clear?
Okay. So you're asking that it be continued to allow Bill to review whether or not he can amend the acreage, and they'll have to bring it back to you folks for further discussion at that time, I would.
I would rather you deny the whole thing from there, and if I have to, I start again, than to do this because I cannot sit here and say that this is something that I'm capable of doing.
Okay. In that case, I'll withdraw my motion, if the secondor will, and make a motion to deny this. So you have the opportunity to come back and get it straight, I guess. So we're comfortable and, you know, we'd like to see this cleaned up. I mean, it's not that. It's just, it's that other 33 acres that I have trouble with, so.
I understand your concerns.
So now we have a motion to deny from Karen, also seconded by Linda. I guess I'd like to ask one question. If we added, you know, if we, if there was a motion to approve this with a plan development designation, you know, part and parcel to that, would that, are you just not willing to consider the plan development at this stage?
At this point, I can't, I am, I cannot do the plan development.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay. All those in favor to deny the application?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hubner. I'm sorry about the outcome, but. I think we're at the end of the agenda, discussion items, staff items.
Nothing.
John?
I do have one. I don't know whether I need to go get my spectacles updated or not, but in the project reports, it is very difficult, as I try to find out what area we are discussing in the project report, those four photos and the description, doesn't get me to a neighborhood. We've grown a little bit, and so I'm not familiar with every street, but I can't read the streets on there. And if you blow it up, then it pixelates out. So I just ask that in the staff report, some attention be paid to identifying the property and the neighborhood that it's in differently than we're doing now. I mean, I like the presentation, I just can't read it. And that's always a bummer for me, so just a comment.
Yeah, I guess I'd echo that a little bit. We, back in the day, before the project reports, I love the project reports layout better than the old, but there used to be a wider aerial that came with these. And it would be kind of, some of these smaller pictures, you can't pick out a landmark, so to speak.
So maybe a solution would be that, okay, we have our project report, and we will certainly look to see if we can clean those up so that you can still see a large enough area to know where you're at, but still read the streets. If we have difficulty with that, we might just link the old-fashioned aerial vicinity map that we used to have as a separate link. We'd like to keep it all within the project report because we know that you guys do open that. Let's take a look at it, but we'll see if we can't get you what you need. And also to remind you that on the front page, we talk about the neighborhood, and then in a sentence or two, we write out how you would find it. So you can read it, too.
In some of the new areas, that still doesn't help. So actually, I like the four photo presentation, so I don't know whether that means that each photo has to have more space so that you can't have that neat little four-block space or whatever. I like it better than the old presentation, quite honestly. It's easier to understand the zoning and everything. It's just, I don't know where I am.
My eyes are pretty old, too. I'll start looking at it to see if I can see it, too, John. If you do hit the escape button, though, it does allow you to zoom in on those, and that's what I have to do. And then I can see it pretty good once I do that. But you have to hit escape, and then it lets you zoom in.
While we're talking about presentation, I would prefer it if you said, "Here's the view from the north," and then show me the side instead of showing me the slide and then saying, "Here's the view from the north," and going on. Because I can't, I don't know why, I can't visualize it instantly, and you already know where it is, so.
We can slow down on that, too. That's a good point, Jan. You know, we are out there, we're trying to hurry up and get to the meat of the discussion, but we have to realize that, you know, this is maybe your trip out to the site is looking at those slides. So we'll slow that part down a little bit.
Seeing no further discussion items, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Linda made the motion, Jan seconded. All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.